I would like to call this meeting to order if we can all stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, "One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
Thank you. Do we have a call, please?
Justin Rock.
Here.
David Gray.
Here.
Green Dudo.
Here.
Nicole Howard.
Here.
Molly King.
Here.
Mary Ann Meesner.
Here.
Ms. Weaver is excellent.
Are there any changes to the agenda? Perfect. Consent agenda. Do we have a motion?
I move we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
All right, we are going to move on to public comments. At this time is the point, if it is not on our agenda, this is the time to step to the podium. You have three minutes and state what you want to state.
This is going to be short and sweet. My name is Michael R. Rosenbaum. I live in La Grande. I first moved here in the summer of 1969. I've come and gone a few times. I'm that permanently since November of 1997. A week and a half ago, I had occasion to visit some folks that live out towards the end of the greenway. And from the end of the greenway, you can see the boundary to Island City. Off to the north, to the northeast of that boundary is a housing development for Island City. And there are many houses just to the south of the greenway. I'm not an expert on plants, but in conversation with people, I believe it's called ryegrass. And I believe it's called thistles, I know. Out there, they are taller than I am. And when they dry out, which they are going to do quite now, they are going to be a major fire hazard. So I'm asking city council, request parks and rep department or public works to go out there and take all those weeds down. If you get a lightning strike, somebody throws a cigarette out there, or there's a spark with the wind that we get this time of year, the housing developments are gone, as is that whole stretch. So I appreciate your time, and I hope you bring this up with parks and rec or public works. Get them out there really quick and scythe all that stuff down. Major fire hazard. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to speak on a non-agenda item? Nope. All right, we will move into our public hearings. We have one public hearing, and it's first reading by title only. Proposed ordinance annexation of 50 properties, group in eight areas, file number 02A&amp;P-24. This time, I would like to open the public hearing and ask the city recorder to read the rules of order in their entirety.
These rules of order are applicable to the public hearing for considering phase two annexations of area A through H into the city of La Grande city limits. This is a legislative hearing, therefore councillor ex parte or pre-hearing contact does not apply. The hearing will proceed as follows. The mayor will open the public hearing and request a staff report. The mayor will then accept public testimony relating to the matter. There is a three-minute time limit for testimony. The order of testimony for this evening will begin with that of proponents, those in favor, followed by opponents, those opposed, and ending with those neutral to the ordinance being adopted. The proceedings are being electronically recorded to be converted to written minutes. When testifying, please step to the podium and clearly print your name and address on the speaker sign-in sheet. Please state only your name before addressing the council. Members of the city council may ask questions of the staff at any time. Subsequent to deliberation, the mayor will close the hearing.
Thank you. At this time, can we have the staff report, Mike?
Yeah, thank you, mayor and council. So last October, the 23rd, we had a work session on opportunities for annexation. And so this was on the agenda for probably a while. And so we got together to talk about what urban growth boundary areas in La Grande had services, did not have services, which ones were eligible for annexations, and which ones were not. And so the, part of that, I provided some background on state law, which is kind of the basis for why we're here tonight. But so statewide planting goal 14 is the, is the urbanization chapter of state law. And that requires cities to do a 20-year population forecast. There's a housing component, and there's also commercial and industrial economic development components. And once you do that needs analysis, then you go out and you find land to satisfy that need. On the housing side, we have plenty of residential land to meet our housing demand. We just don't have the developments. We do have a housing issue. But, but once that land is brought in and it's developed, state law requires as part of that that we have to have the ability to serve that land. And once you serve it and it's developed, then the intent is that you then annex that and it becomes part of your city. And so that's what brings us to the series of annexations the council has asked for. And so at the conclusion of that work session, staff was directed to bring you annexations in a series of three phases. The first phase occurred in January. Those were properties that have city services where those property owners had signed consents to annex that were, that were valid. They were recorded with property deeds and were valid. And so that was, that occurred in January. I can't remember how many properties, but we had, I think, eight areas that were annexed at that time. This, tonight is the second phase that was requested to bring to you. These are properties that, most of these properties have city services and are entirely surrounded by city limits. And, and so this is the second phase that's brought to you. The next phase is likely to be this fall, and those are island properties as well that are entirely surrounded by city limits. And many of those, if not all of them, do not have city services, and that's why they're in phase three. And we'll probably have a discussion and consider something on that later, but maybe another night. But, but anyway, so tonight's meeting is, we're looking at, you know, I think it's 50, 52 or 54 properties on the north side of town that have water, sewer, or both. A few of them don't have any services. Most of those that don't have services are vacant, but I think there might be one or two that, that have a dwelling on them. But that's what's before you tonight. And so we sent notice out in early, I think it was around February, at the council's request. So we sent kind of a, an early kind of a heads-up notice that this was coming in July. And then, then we sent out a notice, I think it went out last week with the council materials. And so every property owner in the areas proposed for annexation tonight received the agenda and a copy of the ordinance and, you know, and the report that kind of goes with that for what affects their properties. And, and so we're only annexing or proposing to annex island areas tonight. And one of the things I wanted to point out with, with island annexation, state law does not have the provision, like the January one, where annexation occurs immediately, unless it's a commercial or industrial used property. Any property that's in residential use is required to have a delayed effective date. And that start date or that delay is at the discretion of the council when you adopt the ordinance. It can't be less than three years and can't be more than 10 years. So you have a three-to-10-year window that you could establish for that. Staff is requesting that you establish a three-year delay for the minimum, because it is going to be a tracking nightmare to try to remember when the three-year deadline comes up. And so right now, we've had the conversation with the county assessor's office and, and the state department of revenue and our office. And there's really no tracking mechanism to know when does the three-year come up and, and who's going to remember that, oh, today's the day. And so, because there's requirements when you get close to, when you hit that three-year mark, we have a bunch of notices we have to send out for that annexation to actually go into effect and occur. And so, so we're asking for the three-year because I think it's more manageable on the tracking, but 10 years is a long time to try to remember what we did 10 years ago and, and when that deadline is. So, so anyway, so I think for the sake of tracking, we're asking for three years, but you do have the ability to change that if, if you feel that's appropriate. And with that, I don't have really anything else that I do have a correction in one of the, I think it's area C. I have a correction that Stacy emailed out to you on one of the properties, because I did have, they have a vacant parcel and a house parcel. And, and that's noted as being, because it was vacant, not in residential use, it was identified for immediate annexation. And when I chatted with that property owner, he corrected me on, on the use of that property and that his house is on one and the other part is functionally part of his yard. It is all in residential use. And so, so that is changed in the ordinance, so that would have the three-year delay. And so you should have that corrected in your packet, but you'll see that in the proposed ordinance next month if we move forward.
Do you have any questions?
The one you're referring to was C on the map?
Yes.
Mike, I think I must have been under the different opinion. I thought that we decided in October that we were not going to force anyone into annexation. And I know I talked with Robert about that, but he said that it was only for that first one or something. We talked about it only, but it wasn't decided to do that.
I, I know that, I know you expressed a position on that. That was not the consensus that was the council's direction. So all of the folks in round one were brought in based on consents. These are the surrounding ones, but folks that are outside that are not surrounded by, we're not forcing anybody in that's outside of the city boundary, for example, in the urban growth boundary. So unless they're an island, they're, they're not included in it. So there are some north side properties and south side properties. But, but yeah, the consensus of the council and the direction that staff received was to move forward with these three phases in this manner.
I'm just being, putting on note that I still disagree, because I made a promise when I campaigned long ago, that I would never force anyone in. So I'm going to stick with my original, but I just want everyone to know that.
Thank you.
So Mike, how does this happen? I mean, you've got a property that isn't part of the city, and then the city, I mean, to create this kind of island, the city would have to grow around that property. Do we not have some mechanism in place to say, you know, when that happens, we go ahead and just envelop that? Because the scenario we've got right now is we've got pockmarks in the city that are not city. So they're not on city services, they're utilizing all the city's benefits in terms of roads, library access, things like that, but are not being taxed the way that all of their neighbors are to have access to the same services. Is that correct?
Yeah, that is correct. And so, so the way the process works that generally results in islands, I'll use the south side as a good example, because that is kind of, naturally occurred that way as development started working its way up the hill. And a property comes in and they subdivide it or do whatever, and they ask for city services, then we annex them. And the properties next to them do not get annexed unless they voluntarily want to come in. And so then the next one up the hill does something, and then they get annexed. And then the one next to them gets, and, and that naturally sometimes just creates these little pockets of folks that were not interested at the time. And so they got left behind. And so that's how we ended up with these pockets. I'm not sure how this area on the north side occurred. I mean, there's a lot of issues that date back into the 80s, maybe even earlier, when city services were extended out to that area, because a lot of it had to do with the Boise Cascade contamination of wells, there were sewer issue failures and a number of things. And so I don't know how all of that occurred and evolved over time. But, but we do have, just through this series, we, we have incrementally annexed properties and created these islands. And, and in the past, we've gone through other methods to, to try to annex properties that have failed, that have gone through the voters. This is a different mechanism where we're just doing it in a piecemeal manner that, you know, state law provides. And so that's, that's the direction I was given, and that's what you have tonight.
So if new people coming in, if a new property gets developed now, are they required to sign the form that says when we want to annex them, they were agreeing to be annexed?
If they are receiving city services and we physically can annex them, they will be annexed. They don't sign a form.
They don't have.
They, they sign a consent form, but it's not, but it's not as in-depth as the ones that we would record like we have for the properties that were in January. It's usually, it's a more, it's a simpler consent form. And then we just annex them immediately upon providing the service. They actually don't receive the service until they get annexed. And so, so we're, we're doing things ahead of the process in those scenarios. But, but there are properties, like some of these, that over, just over time is, that received city services, they were so far removed from the city limits that we couldn't annex them, because we couldn't reach them with our city boundary.
But, I mean, I'm thinking that now that you should have adjusted it, so anybody, any new property comes in, with the understanding that even if they're not annexed now, they could be, they're giving permission to be annexed at some point?
We do that now, yes.
Now?
Yeah, but it's only.
Automatically annexed then?
But it's directly tied to receiving city services. So when they, when they, yeah, when they want to develop their property, and if we cannot reach them with the city limits for some reason, so it's physically not possible, they sign an agreement that gets recorded in the deed records, which is what you saw in January. But we, so we continue, we still do that. And so we, and we have a number of properties that had that, but you actually saw, I think, probably all of them in January, even, because there was some on the south side that, that we pulled up that we finally could reach. And just because of the incremental things that occurred over time.
How does this work with roads? Like, I'm looking at this map, and we have a portion of North Pine, as well as a portion of Second Street, that technically are within these islands. But I'm assuming the city's managing that road, plowing the road, you know, doing everything there, even though that's within an island or no?
Well, that happened in January. So, and so by joint management agreement with the county, every time we do an annexation, if there is a county road next to that annexation, we're required to bring that in to make it a city road. And we're, we're required to assume that's part of our growth, is, is we take over the county roads as they come in. And so, so while historically we have not maintained them, because they've not been our roads, they are our roads now, and those will be on our public works list of, of roads to add to pothole fixing and whatever else, however that maintenance is supposed to work, they'll be added to the queue, just like every other street in the city.
Oh, interesting. So like during the winter, the city was not plowing those areas of residential?
Not to my knowledge, yeah.
Interesting, okay.
Any more questions for Mike? Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
At this time, will be public testimony. You do have a three-minute time limit, so there is a timer. It will let you know when you're hitting that three minutes. Anybody who would like to speak on behalf of in favor, neutral, or opposition, now is the time.
Do you have to follow a certain order of in favor first?
You, you do, mayor.
Do I? Okay. So yes, in favor will be the first one. Neutral? You're fine. I just have to announce what we're doing.
Maybe it would be helpful for me to, if you are in favor of the ordinance that would annex the properties into the city, this is the time for you to speak. If you're opposed to the properties being annexed, you would follow them. And then anyone who doesn't oppose or, or is not in favor, but would just simply like to comment on the matter, would be those neutral that would go last. Hope that helps. I can't tell you whether or not you're in favor or.
I don't see anybody in favor, so anybody that's opposed of it, now is the time to speak. Please, actually, and one more thing before you start, just make sure you put your name, address on the form is great.
So my name is Charlie Sinclair. I live in 2708 North Maple, I believe it's section B. And I am opposed to joining city, and they've brought up quite a few points. One thing they haven't brought up yet is that we pay higher city sewer and, and water fees, forced to have to do that, right?
Are you getting services from the city at all? Are you getting sewer or water?
That I am located in. We pay higher rates, so, and I think that rate's actually quite a bit higher than.
But now you won't sell.
Question real quick, Robert. Now with them becoming part of the city, will their rates go down?
Yeah, they will. They'll be cut now.
Immediately or after the three years?
So I, if I could interject, it would probably be most appropriate to hear the testimony and then at the conclusion of the testimony, then to respond, because I think if we're going to get into this back-and-forth conversation, it's going to be very confusing as to how much time has been allocated to an individual.
Sure, I don't want to waste your time.
There is somebody in our, on our block that did get annexed, and, and his rates actually went up. He's a single person living there, and his rates went up by $50 a month, so. I'm sorry, I'm done. I'm just trying to fill out.
If you want to let me know that name and property address, I'll look into that.
I know his name is Dave. I'm not quite sure what Dave's last name, but he's.
We can, we can talk after.
Should I put opposed here?
Thank you.
I'm James Akers. I live at 2804 North Maple, neighbor to Charlie. And I don't know if I'm opposed. I'm, I'm not going to say I'm in favor, but I might be neutral. And I guess my concern is, to what is the advantage? Currently, when we bought 10 to 11 years ago, our taxes were half the rate as it was in city limits. So by being annexed, what am I gaining when my taxes double? Because doubling of my property taxes is not going to offset the cutting of the utilities of the water and sewer by half. So I'm curious, what am I going to lose by becoming a resident of La Grande, Oregon, versus urban growth boundary? Because currently, my daughter is involved with FFA, and we. Because currently, my daughter is involved with FFA and we raise sheep and chickens. We're within the legal limit for the number of chickens, but is that going to change by becoming a city property? I'm a beekeeper and I do keep some of the bees on my property as well. Is that going to change? And so I guess my concerns, my questions are more of, what am I going to lose? What am I going to gain? Because if you can convince me that the benefits outweigh the disadvantages of a higher tax rate, then I'm more than willing to consider your opinion. But if I gain nothing other than higher taxes, what good is it? Because you say you're going to put our road onto the list of roads to maintain. I ask any of you, take a small car, drive down Foley, drive down Terrace, and hopefully you don't lose your muffler. Because that road has potholes that will swallow a full-size pickup. And so if that's what I'm gaining is a city that can't maintain roads, to what advantage? I'd rather stay in the county where they come and grate the road to at least fill in the potholes. So I guess that's really what I'm curious about. What do I gain? What do I lose? How does this benefit me over just the city saying, we have more properties, we're getting a better tax rate, so now we have more money, but it's not going to benefit our residents?
I do want to answer one of your questions. One other thing you are going to be getting is police and fire. Right now, yes, you do get the county and yes, the police and fire do come out. But the rest of us are all residents. We all pay into that to make sure that all of our citizens are getting the best that we can in police and fire, which is protecting you and your family. Do I understand that? But now, once this happens, then it'll be the policemen, the LaGrande City Police, the LaGrande Fire. No, you're good. I, actually, I can't really talk to you. Why are you right there? And I have already given everybody a three-minute time limit and I can't ask for another opinion. I just wanted to make a statement. I was trying to answer his question. I didn't want to just sit here and not say something. And that's what I was answering. And I'm not, I don't want to get an argument or discussion because we can't keep going with that part. Thank you. No, you're good. I appreciate it. Is there any more testimony? All right, counselor discussion.
I'd like to have Mike answer those questions for those individuals.
Yeah, that'd be great.
You have to let me know which ones you want me to answer. The one that I know I can answer for sure is there's a livestock question. And so right now, all of these properties are in the urban growth boundary and all of them are subject to the same standards that they will be subject to after annexation. Exactly the same. And nothing changes. And so we do have livestock standards that allow for chickens, that allow for beekeeping, the sheep and goats and other 4-H animals. We do have a 4-H provision in our livestock, but those are generally not allowed in residential zones. But we have a number of properties that are grandfathered in that can continue that use because they pre-existed. And I would hope and assume that that's the case with your property that, because it's already zoned that way. So, you know, so if that's the activity that's occurring, nothing's going to change from a zoning perspective and land use perspective. It all stays the same. Then the only other piece that I, I think I can comment on that, you know, may or may not add a value, but the gain or loss piece, is all of these properties benefit from all of the city services that every city resident, there's property owners that are half a block away. And then some of the properties that are being annexed, the person right across the street has the exact same benefits. They're paying for it, the urban growth boundary folks are not. And so that's the library, it's all the parks, it's all the roads that they, that they have to take to get to their property, all of those things. Those are city things that the city pays for and city residents pay for. And you physically can't get to these properties unless you drive through the city. And so anyway, so that's the gain or benefit is they might not have as much to gain because they already have it and just not, or not paying for it, anyway.
And so my question, when he was commenting about the higher water and sewer, does that stay on for the next three years? Because the annexation won't affect.
So the water sewer question, I might have to defer some of this to Kyle. But so right now, properties in the urban growth boundary that have city service, water sewer service, pay a double rate.
Right.
As soon as annexation occurs, they go to a single rate. So anyway, so I'm glad, Robert, we want to look into this one that maybe the rate went up. I know that there are a couple of properties when we went through this effort, and especially in January, there were properties when we went to the city finance and they went, that one's not in the city limits? I thought that's always been in the city limits. They've been on a city rate for, you know, the last 15 years. They haven't been paying double. And so some folks were not paying double and some folks were. And so, so some of the confusion is folks did get increased to their double rate as soon as that got recognized. And so I know back in November, December, the finance department moved folks from a single rate to a double rate once they knew they were not in the city. And they corrected that for the one or two months until the annexation occurred. And now they should be back to a single rate again. If they're not, then that needs to be corrected. So I know that there's probably two or three properties that that occurred to it. Maybe this is one of those. But anyway, but overall, every property that has city service, water sewer service, will see a reduction monthly in their water sewer bill. But almost all of them will see an increase in property tax come November. So they'll, they'll see a monthly benefit of savings, but come November, there will be an increase in property tax. And there's a very small handful, probably less than five, that, it's all based on property value that will actually see an overall savings. The money they save from the water sewer getting cut outweighs the tax increase because the property value is so low that they actually will save, but there's very few of them.
But that's three years out.
Yeah, that's going to be three years out. The ones that will be immediate are the ones that are non-residential. So there's the warehouse facility that's on the corner of Z and Pine. There's a mini storage on the corner of V and Willow. Then we have, I think it's Area H is the wood grain. They bought the triangle piece of property right across from the mall, where you enter the wood grain facility. For years, everybody just thinks it's in the city, but it's a little tiny pocket of county. And then ODOT owns a chunk up on the corner of Second Street. Before you go over the overpass, that is, that'll come in. But anyway, so those are the handfuls that'll be immediate. But, but all of the residential properties, at least with what's proposed, will have a three-year delay. So nothing will change for three years. So it will be the same tomorrow as it is yesterday for the next three years. Nothing will happen for three years. However, if there is a property transfer, if a property sells, that's an immediate trigger that causes that one property to annex, which will kind of create this hopscotching nightmare, make it a little bit worse for the, for the emergency service folks as, as little pockets get added here and there. But anyway, but that only happens on a property transfer.
Can the person request to come in early?
And a person can request. So that's the other thing is, is we do have a requirement. So if there's a property that has, say, water service, there's quite a few that have water service but no sewer. And so as their septic systems fail, then they go to public works and they say, hey, I've got an issue, I need city sewer. Then we will have them sign an agreement and then you, they will come before you and they would be annexed. If they're in this area, I don't know what that process looks like. We have to go through an exercise, but they're, they would then go through an immediate annexation because they would sign an agreement.
And that would truncate the three years down to whatever.
Yeah, it'd be immediate of whatever time they sign that.
Actually, we're now into the council. Coming up in August, we will have this in front of us again. And at that time, you can come back and respond. No, we're done with the public comment now. We're into the council discussion until August 7th now. Any more discussion? Thank you, Mike. At this time, I'd have the city recorder read the proposed ordinance for the first time by title only.
An ordinance of the city council of the city of LaGrande, Union County, Oregon, declaring certain territory annexed to the city of LaGrande, Union County, Oregon, specifically properties located within Area A and Township 2, South Range 38 East, Section 31 DD, and all adjacent street rights of way and removing said property from the LaGrande Rural Fire Protection District and declaring an effective date.
Thank you.
An ordinance of the city council of the city of LaGrande, Union County, Oregon, declaring certain territory annexed to the city of LaGrande, Union County, Oregon, specifically properties located within Area B and Township 3, South Range 38 East, Section 5 AB, and the adjacent Spruce Street right of way and removing said property from the LaGrande Rural Fire Protection District and declaring an effective date. An ordinance of the city council of the city of LaGrande, Union County, Oregon, declaring certain territory annexed to the city of LaGrande, Union County, Oregon, specifically properties located within Area C and Township 3, South Range 38 East, Section 5 AB, and removing said property from the LaGrande Rural Fire Protection District and declaring an effective date. An ordinance of the city council of the city of LaGrande, Union County, Oregon, declaring certain territory annexed to the city of LaGrande, Union County, Oregon, specifically properties located within Area D and Township 3, South Range 38 East, Section 5 AB, and the adjacent North Pine Street right of way and removing said property from the LaGrande Rural Fire Protection District and declaring an effective date. An ordinance of the city council of the city of LaGrande, Union County, Oregon, declaring certain territory annexed to the city of LaGrande, Union County, Oregon, specifically properties located within Area E and Township 3, South Range 38 East, Section 5 AB, and removing said property from the LaGrande Rural Fire Protection District and declaring an effective date. An ordinance of the city council of the city of LaGrande, Union County, Oregon, declaring certain territory annexed to the city of LaGrande, Union County, Oregon, specifically properties located within Area F and Township 3, South Range 38 East, Section 5 AC, and the adjacent North Willow Street, X Avenue, and North Cherry Street, and removing said property from the LaGrande Rural Fire Protection District and declaring an effective date. An ordinance of the city council of the city of LaGrande, Union County, Oregon, declaring certain territory annexed to the city of LaGrande, Union County, Oregon, specifically properties located within Area G and Township 3, South Range 38 East, Section 5 DB, and the adjacent North Willow Street and U Avenue, and removing said property from the LaGrande Rural Fire Protection District and declaring an effective date. And our last one. An ordinance of the city council of the city of LaGrande, Union County, Oregon, declaring certain territory annexed to the city of LaGrande, Union County, Oregon, specifically properties located within Area H and Township 3, South Range 38 East, Section 5, and removing said property from the LaGrande Rural Fire Protection District and declaring an effective date.
Thank you. At this time, the public hearing is continued to August 7th, 2024, at which time the proposed ordinance are scheduled to be read a second time by title only and considered for adoption. There is no other public hearing. So basically, just kind of let you folks know, this will come back August 7th and there will be public testimony. So if you want to come and speak, you can do it at that time. Thank you. Unfinished business, there is none. New business, there is none. Union County Commissioners, Commissioner Scauffield let me know there was no updates and that he would not be here this evening. Staff comments, is there any staff that would like to make comments? City manager comments?
Thank you. I have a couple of things. I sent out an email to the council regarding the upcoming League of Oregon Cities prioritization for legislative agenda. And if the council would reach consensus on wanting to participate, if you would submit to me your top five individual from the list of potential priorities that were in the email in the order that you view them as priorities, I will compile that and bring forward an agenda in August for the council to formally adopt the city's priorities as input for the League of Oregon cities for their lobbying efforts moving forward for the next couple of years. So.
Is that emailed from League of Oregon cities on June 21st? Is that the?
Sounds about right. Yeah, I had, I had sent it out. There's, there's one that comes to me that has the actual vote. And so I forwarded that without the link for the vote, but it does have a guide that lists all of the potential priorities. So just main question for the council is, do we want to participate again? We have in the past, we'd skipped a year or two.
Well, I believe we do because I already sent you my priorities, so. But I believe, in my opinion, yes, I think we should.
Anyone think it's a bad idea?
No.
All right, go ahead and get those to me and we'll have something in August for you to consider as the council's priorities. I also sent out the draft city manager evaluation form with some tweaks. Any feedback on that?
No, that I didn't see. Did that just come?
The other day.
Oh, wow, okay.
We had added an overall at the bottom and also clarified about the comments being my performance, not the city itself and what the city is up to. We had a conversation last time about, I really wish that we were doing thus and so and it's like, that's out of my control. Let's focus on the things I have or haven't done. So we've added some clarifying language just to kind of help focus that conversation and the, and the feedback. And then added that overall. So I'll get with the mayor and the mayor pro tem on timing and do the self-assessment and get that out to you. Last thing, you're not sitting as the agency right now, but I did want to give you a heads up. The Liberty Theater had received an extension through August to complete their project because of the EDA funding that they had received about a year ago. They have been hitting roadblock after roadblock with the EDA on getting the paperwork through their system to get approved for that funding. There's no way that they're going to meet that deadline and I'm anticipating that they are going to request an extension of that. So again, I would like no response from you because you are not sitting as the agency, but I did want to let you know to expect that we will have an agency meeting in August and that'll be something that they're going to ask for some additional time because they have been unable to get the funding done a couple of months ago. One of the iterations of the drafts finally got looked at by an attorney and they came up with a plethora of new expectations and requirements and information that they hadn't mentioned for months. And it's been a really frustrating process. I think they're about where they need to be in terms of the paperwork. But then it's a matter of getting, going out to bed and actually getting the work done. So just a heads up and that's all I have.
Will you tell us more about later, about the property that just got sold? You said that.
I will, but you're not sitting as the agency.
I know. Matt, Matt, can you?
I will. Closed on Lot 10.
Yeah.
Full price offer, $50,000.
I just wondered what it was, but that's okay.
Thank you. Any counselor comments?
Crazy Days is coming, coming next weekend and the car show. And this is the first time we've had a mayor's award that our mayor is out of town for now, but our mayor pro tem is going to judge it.
Very appreciative.
By this weekend, are you talking about the one in like three days?
No, 20th.
Thank you. Just want to make sure.
And the car show and Crazy Days are?
Together, yeah. So it's nice to have the mayor's award finally in there.
Just had it poke at me.
I know.
So just a quick comment from my end. Some of you are aware of the Supreme Court case, City of Grant's past, Oregon v. Johnson? That, I think, is an opportunity for us to revisit some of the discussion that we had a year or so ago on, you know, how we handle homeless populations here within the city. And so just, yeah, I thought I'd bring that up as, you know, maybe an opportunity to revisit that if we feel so inclined. But it looks like, you know, that has created some changes that will affect the entire nation on, you know, what is allowable or not.
I could actually speak to that. I sat in on a CIS LSE webinar earlier this week. And unless and until the state legislature does something different with House Bill, I think it's 3115. I think it's 3115, pretty much all of the provisions that were put in place by the Ninth Circuit were adopted by the state legislature in Oregon. So all of those requirements that now can be lifted in other states, that's not the case in Oregon. So we're still required to do all of the things that we have been doing under the Ninth Circuit discussion. So there's really nothing for us to do differently. We have to continue to follow the state laws.
Interesting, because my understanding is that state laws are now in opposition to the Supreme Court opinion. Is that not the case?
The, I can't answer that because that's a legal question.
Right.
As part of the conversation from the attorney, one of the attorneys that actually was representing Grants Pass was, the next thing that has to happen is the state legislature has to do something different. And even though it may be in, in conflict, unless and until the state legislature changes something, we have to abide by those.
We want to go to that position of in-between.
Yeah. And I think, I think the House bill was originally intended as a stopgap measure until the case was fully resolved. So it'll be interesting to see what happens next at the next legislative session. But the, the guidance was continue to do what you're doing. And if you haven't adopted ordinances that set time, place, and matter, those cities need to continue to afford to do so.
Any other counselors? Nope. With that, we are adjourned.